Order. This is Byron Maybrow, call please.
Yes. Uh, Mrs. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Dawson.
Here.
Ms. Harrington.
Here.
Mr. Rickett.
Here.
Madam Chair, the clerk certifies the presence of a quorum.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No ma'am.
Do you have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And Ms. Dawson, may I have a closed session motion please?
Pursuant to two point two dash thirty seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting for the following: Discussion of personnel or the performance of a division employee as authorized by section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia for resignation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees, and the superintendent's evaluation.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. We're in closed session.
To call this meeting back to order? Ms. Dawson, I have closed session certification, please.
Whereas the Orange County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Orange County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Byron, may I have roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mrs. Dawson?
Aye.
Ms. Harrington?
Aye.
Mr. Rickett?
Aye.
Madam Chair, the Clerk certifies the vote as follows: four yes votes, no no votes. The resolution is approved by a four to zero vote.
Thank you. Dr. Horneck, deposition of personnel?
Yes, ma'am, ask for and recommend approval of the personnel actions as presented in closed session.
May I have a motion?
I move that we approve the personnel agenda to include resignation, nonrenewal, summer school, employment transfer, rescind employment, salary adjustment, and extracurricular and coaching appointments.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have two minutes, so we'll...
We can welcome everyone.
Welcome everyone.
Taking their evening off to join us in tonight's meeting. Except for this group over here. Not you guys. Not you guys.
There's no more fun place to be.
No more fun place to be. We can do the pledge if you want to.
Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Still wasn't enough time. All right.
We have three seconds to six.
Seconds?
We're on.
All right, Dr. Horneck?
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening we will start with recognitions, and I'd like to start with recognizing and welcoming our newest administrative appointments, and I'd like to start at the high school. And it is an honor and a privilege to let the community know that we have recommended and the board has approved Mr. Nick Sedano as the new principal at Orange County High School. He is currently the principal at Locust Grove Middle School. Mr. Sedano has been with Orange County Schools for the last 20 years, 15 of which have been in an administrative capacity here in the county. He said about his move to Orange, quote, "I'm honored to have the privilege of leading Orange County's flagship school and excited to reconnect with the students and families I've had the opportunity to work with in previous roles across the division. As always, my mission is to ensure that every student receives a high-quality education that prepares them for life beyond our public school walls while also fostering a safe, supportive environment and a positive school culture. I'm looking forward to guiding OCS into the second quarter of the 21st century by evaluating our current practices, enhancing the services we offer, and advancing the school toward our shared vision of excellence. I'd also like to recognize the tremendous growth Locust Grove Middle School has experienced over the past two years. It's clear that the school is on the cusp of something remarkable, and I have full confidence in the team to carry forward the vision we've built together." Nick is on vacation, out of the country currently, but if you would all join me in giving him a round of applause, we look forward to him starting. Second this evening, Mr. Brandon, if you would like to stand up, if you want to start making your way over, we're gonna, we're gonna get a picture with you, and if your lovely wife would like to come as well, we'd love to have you in the picture if you would like to. It is an honor and a privilege as well this evening to bring forward Mr. Brandon Bennett as our new Director of Technology for Orange County Public Schools. First and foremost, Brandon is an Orange County High School graduate, class of 2011, and he has been fully committed and is fully invested into this community and in this school division. He began working for the school division in 2018 as a technology support specialist, and in January of 2022, he moved into the role of computer network specialist, so the vast majority of his professional career has been right here in Orange, and we're really excited for him to take the next step here in his home school. What Brandon said, quote, about the move to Orange, about the move here up in Orange to the Director of Technology, quote, "I'm thrilled to be joining the administrative team. I'm excited to continue supporting the community and the school system that helped educate me through safe and meaningful technologies. Ladies and gentlemen, it is an honor and a privilege to recognize and welcome Mr. Brandon Bennett as our new Director of Technology."
Yep, so I need you all to shift this way. And I need one, just you please.
And finally, this evening, we are also joined by Mr. Paul PJ Solinsky. PJ, if you want to make your way up towards the front. Mr. Solinsky is going to be the newest member of the high school administrative team, coming in as the Dean of Students for Orange County High School. Mr. Solinsky began his career in education in Prince William County in 2001, and he's spent his first eight years teaching health and PE, coaching five sports during his tenure in Prince William. In 2009, he made the transition to the city of Fredericksburg, where you were for the next 13 years, if that's correct PJ, as a PE teacher and then as an assistant principal. While in Fredericksburg, he earned his Masters in Admin and Supervision from VCU. His administrative career began in 2012, and he's been an administrator for the last 14 years. Upon leaving Fredericksburg, he made a brief stop in Henrico and then to Fluvana, where he is currently a sitting elementary school assistant principal. Mr. Solinsky takes great pride in building relationships with students and staff and families. He's excited about the opportunity to immerse himself into the Orange County community. He is definitely not a stranger to our community, as he drives from his home in Spotsylvania and goes all the way to Fluvana to work during the day, and for the last, how many years, PJ, is it the last year, two years?
Last year.
Okay, so, so all the way through last year, on his way back through, he comes to Orange County High School and volunteer coaches our wrestling team, which by the way, those, those young men and women have had tremendous success, and I believe you come from quite a family lineage when I was looking up from excellence in wrestling, so we're really excited to have you. And I think it goes without saying, that really demonstrates the commitment that you want to Orange, and I know Fluvana, coming to Orange was the only place you would leave Fluvana for, and we're really excited to onboard Mr. Solinsky. When he's away from school, you can usually find him in one of a few places, coaching wrestling probably primarily, and again, he just completed his 28th year of coaching in the state of Virginia. Again, he is, he is really excited, Orange County Public Schools again is the only school system that he would leave Fluvana for, he's extremely excited to be at the high school and looks forward to building relationships with everybody, and he encourages everybody to stop by, introduce themselves, and do not hesitate to reach out to him to start building those connections. Ladies and gentlemen, it is an honor and a privilege to welcome and recognize Mr. PJ Solinsky as our new Dean of Students for Orange County High School.
Yes, sir, thank you. Absolutely. Yeah, I'm happy to be here. I guess it's my place, I don't need... Hi PJ Solinsky, very nice to meet you. Yes, ma'am. Hey.
Ready roll?
I probably got your picture, you know, it's taken me six days, but now you're here.
Wait till you see what AI did.
A whole dupers.
All right, one, two, three. And one, just you.
Yes, ma'am, I thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yes, sir, thanks.
All right. Cheese.
Cheese.
Cool. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations PJ.
Thank you. I look forward to it, I'm bittersweet, but I'm very excited to be here.
I'll tell you PJ, we're happy to have you, and I think it's pretty clear you will bring a little bit of energy to the high school.
A little bit for it all.
Brother, let's bring it on, my friend.
That's right, brother.
Welcome to Orange. Ladies and gentlemen, please again welcome Nick, Brandon, and PJ to the administrative team. We are equally excited, we have some incredible recognition this evening, all coming from Ms. Ailer and our Department of Special Education and Student Services. Susan, I'm gonna turn it over to you for some really important recognition.
Susan, one second.
Yes.
I just wanted, Catherine, Brandon, thank you both for... No, no, stay right there. Thank you both for coming. Very much appreciate that, thank you very much, taking the time out of your day on the summer and stuff, so very much appreciated, thank you.
Madam Chair, Superintendent, and members of the board, thank you for having me this evening, and I have some recognitions that I'm really excited about. Each year, for the last probably at least 20 years, we have participated in special games, which is a coordinated effort with Orange, Culpepper, and Madison. Sometimes Louisa, sometimes Rappahannock also, and it's always taken place in Culpepper. And it's been an amazing experience for our students with disabilities. It's actually the best day of the year, honestly, so I'll just say that. This year, because of some scheduling issues and transportation and just the fact that we have grown to such large numbers, we were unable to participate with Culpepper, so we were gonna host the event ourselves. And so, Laura Beth Chambers, our adaptive PE teacher, took on the task to arrange to have the games here in Orange. And so, we had picked two Friday, or a Friday, and I think a Tuesday or Wednesday as our rain date. And lo and behold, both days were like out of the question. They were both rainy days. And so, Ms. Chambers has a previous connection with Woodbury Forest School and Matt Blunden. And so, she's reached out to Matt and said, hey, we have this event that we'd love to have. Would there be any chance that Woodbury Forest would be willing to host us and work with us so that we could go ahead and have the event this year? And so, I want to extend my deepest gratitude to Matt Blunden and Woodbury Forest School Athletics for their extraordinary partnership in hosting our special games. When we reached out with the very short timeline, there was no hesitation whatsoever, just an immediate enthusiastic yes. Not only did they welcome us, but his team was incredibly generous, instantly offering whatever was needed to make the event a success, even got a quick text, "We need X," it was there. Their seamless accommodation and unwavering support truly went above and beyond, ensuring a fantastic and memorable day for everyone involved, and we couldn't have asked for a more dedicated and responsive host. Thank you, Mr. Blunden. And Woodbury Forest.
I also want to say, just from working in a previous school division and partnering with Woodbury Forest on other events for students with disabilities, they are absolutely amazing, so thank you.
Yeah, you have been for a long time, and thank you very much, and even working with us when, when either this year or the past year, we had a football game we couldn't play. I know we came and used your facilities, which are phenomenal. So, we really appreciate the partnership, and thank you guys for supporting our special games in Orange County Public Schools. So, with deep sincerity, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and then, now I'd like to recognize four exceptional special education teachers. At Locust Grove Primary School and Locust Grove Elementary School, they ensure every student shines, even those students with complex needs. Four of our incredible special education teachers dedicated many hours of personal time to create an amazing book showcasing students' talents as writers and illustrators. Consider a student who might not typically be able to color or write independently due to fine motor limitations. By simply giving them a marker and a switch-activated toy, they can joyfully and successfully color their own illustration just like any other student. This project is all about empowering every child. The impact on families has been profound. Parents tell us how much they adore the book, with many expressing that they never thought their child will be able to participate in such a project. Witnessing their child recognized as an author and illustrator in a published work is not just meaningful, it's often a dream come true that surpasses all expectations. And it's a hardbound book that they put together, and they make sure every child in the class has a book to take home. So, first, I'm gonna recognize and call up Ms. Madison Pitts. And Holly Hanford. And I want to thank Madison, Holly, Jessica, and Christina for your dedication to helping our students shine.
And Susan, if possible, do you think we could get some copies for the board members so they can see the finished product?
Absolutely.
Yep, so we will make sure that the board has copies of these books. And so, thank you very much. And that is all for this evening for recognitions. And Madam Chair, if it is okay with you, we can move on to reports. And I'll bring Mr. Rutter forward, who will introduce our two guests from ABM to provide an update on the Phase Three report of our performance contract. Mr. Rutter?
Thank you, Dr. Horneck.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm happy to introduce to you tonight Brian Ratchford, and Brian Walker from ABM. You know that we have a long-lasting relationship with ABM. We're now in our Phase Three with our energy management changes to our buildings and facilities. Since my department is in charge of paying the bills, I've seen the benefit, and it's a wonderful relationship that we have with these folks. So, I'm gonna leave it over, turn it over to Brian.
Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you.
Welcome, Brian. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you.
And just let us know, and we will advance the screen for you.
Yes, actually, this is the full PDF report. There should have been a PowerPoint associated with this.
Probably would have come from WIT, correct?
That's right.
Yep.
I got it.
That is it.
Perfect. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. No problem at all. Again, my name is Brian Walker. This is Brian Ratchford. I am the Measurement and Verification Manager for Orange, actually participated all the way back in Phase One. So, been here a long time, it's been a great partnership, so, next slide. Just here to discuss the measurement verification process that we're using to verify savings on this job, our projected savings for Year One, which ends October of this year, and just general expectations. Next slide. And so, the verbiage in the industry is Energy Conservation Measure, ECM. Effectively, we're trying to either reduce your rate or length of use, so think lowering your power for your lights that are in your ceiling, or reducing the actual runtime on a piece of equipment. Next slide. And so, in order to verify our savings, we use the International Protocol for Measurement and Verification Performance. There are four different options, two which deal specifically with the retrofit that we did, and two that deal with the entire building and everything that's going on in it. For this project, we use the Option A Key Parameter Measurement for our ECMs on this project. I'll explain what that is in just a second. Next slide. And so, with Option A, what we want to do is just verify that the ECMs or Energy Conservation Measures have the potential to perform. So, the ECMs we did here, lighting, water conservation, boiler controllers, HVAC upgrades, and transformers, again, we're either reducing the amount of time you're using those, or we're making them more efficient. So, for example, in the lights, we measure the power before and after the retrofit, and we agree on the occupied hours of certain spaces, and that's how we calculate our savings. It protects you from unexpected vacancies, so for instance, for whatever reason you were to have to close down a wing on a building, we couldn't overestimate savings as a result of that. And then, you can operate these buildings as you like. We do have some parameters that we'd like for you to follow, but I understand there was an incident here with some water where we needed to run the AC more just to get the, get that moisture out, so you can do that. Next slide. And so, what we did, we just came in and verified how you use your buildings during the development phase. We verified what we're gonna install in terms of quantities and specs. We monitored the performance via sampling, verified any programming where that was applicable, and communicated any post-installation opportunities. Next slide. And so, while we're installing these, we, again, we took measurements where that was needed before and after, established set points on your HVAC, verified your schedules, took pictures, had as-built drawings, et cetera, in place. And then, for each ECM, as it was completed, we obtained sign-off. Next slide. And so, ongoing, every year, you can expect to see us out here, aside from these meetings, just being on site at the various buildings, just trying to upload on what's going on with your facilities, if you have any ongoing needs, just to make sure everything is still in place, and, or we're gonna maintain those savings going forward. And it'll be a little bit of a two-way street on communications, if you guys have any projects where you're gonna add any space or dramatically change the operation of a building, just so we have that and we can put it in the report. Next slide. That is very dark. Sorry about that. But basically, I'll get you that breakdown, but basically, it is the ECM breakdown. Almost 70% is lighting. All the rest of that combines for 30% of the savings. So, the largest one outside of that is water conservation at about 12%. So, next slide. And so, again, we entered into the contract for Phase Three in July of 2023, installed from August of '23 to October of '24. And our Year One performance period is gonna be November of '24 to October '25. We did five Energy Conservation Measures. For Year One, we're projecting over $173,000 in energy savings. There was further agreed upon operational savings of $52,000 related to, for instance, the cost of maybe not changing certain lights at the schedule we were, or doing certain maintenance on HVAC equipment that we replaced. During the installation period, we finished a number of those ECMs before we finished the whole job and closed out. So, particularly with lighting and water conservation, we realized an additional $61,000 in savings during that installation period that we're gonna use for Year One. So, very good news on this. Next slide. That is all. Thank you again. Again, Phase, we're in Phase Three, it's been an excellent, excellent project, I think, for both sides, and just here to field any questions you may have.
Brian, would you be able to, at this point, probably all of, all of us are new, I know we can go back to Phase One, which was probably in the, I don't know, 2011, '12, '13 timeframe, and that was primarily changing lights to LEDs in pretty much all the buildings, except for current Locust Grove Elementary at the time, as that was mothballed, mothballed at the time, correct?
That's right.
Okay, and then, Performance Contract Two was to come back and do what you did in Phase One in Locust Grove Elementary School. So, now, once that, once we started hosting kids there, so all nine schools were up to, all the sites were up to the same standard. And then, Performance Contract Three is our most recent one, and I believe Mrs. Anderson would be the only board member that would have been on the board at the time that that one was agreed upon, I believe. And that was a host of different things, probably the biggest component being the full, the complete overhaul of the Gordon Barber HVAC system that we did over the course of last summer.
That's correct.
Just to, just to, so everybody has an awareness of the things you've been doing for the last 12 to 13 years.
That's correct. And so, yes, the Gordon Barber piece on the HVAC is what we came in and did on that end. But even with the lighting, we came back and did that again because the technology has advanced to the point where those power draws from the first time we did it have now been cut in half from, in the individual lights, and then they provide the same amount of light. So, it's pretty amazing. So, we were able to do that as well, and I believe everybody in this home room.
Yes, and at Gordon Barber, we had a, previously, we had the two-pipe system, and the pipes were degraded and eroded to the point that we could no longer really get water through them for a long period of time, and I know we transferred the system over to a... VR, sorry. VR, variable refrigerant, yep, system. And I know that that has greatly enhanced air quality at Gordon Barber, in addition to the, in addition to the savings.
Okay.
Thank you. Have we done this building?
Wait, wait.
So, from an HVAC standpoint... Not HVAC.
No, true.
Lighting, yes. Light and water conservation. But not HVAC. That's correct. We, this is the last school, Mr. Rickett, that is a two-pipe on the Headstar side. When we redid Orange Elementary School, it is a new two-pipe system because the pipes didn't have the erosion and the degradation that the pipes at Gordon Barber had. And we're using the two pipes at Orange Elementary as the condensing water, because we have the classroom units that are water-source heat pumps. All right. Brian?
Can I just ask a quick question? Was this part of like an overall state requirement or a new law or something, or how did we enter in, and why did we enter into the agreement with you to go forward with these three phases?
Marshall?
Great question, Ms. Harrington. Doug Arnold started these as, before I was here and before Marty was here, and this was a way for OCPS to get new equipment, and at really no cost to us, as long as we followed the guidelines and with the schedules and the things that ABM set forth. So, we got upgrades to our facilities, but we also saved money on utility bills.
And were there, were there things that we did not take advantage of as far as any conservation rec, methods?
I could probably answer that for you. So, with a lot of these projects, there's three different ways to look at it. There's Energy Conservation Measurements, which the full cost of operational and energy savings can cover the cost of replacing, so let's say, your lighting. So, that'll be fully covered. Then you have discounted capital to where you can buy things down at a kind of a discount, right? Because if we can guarantee our, Virginia Code allows us to guarantee energy savings for 15 years. So, if we can come in and reduce your utility spend by 25%, we guarantee those savings for 15 years. So, if we ever miss the mark and something broke down here, we would cut you guys a check. So, it's kind of a way to get things done, but the second measurement is discounted capital, like I was saying, and that's a lot of your mechanical things. So, you would see a lot of your HVAC systems, you'd just be getting it at a discounted rate, right, because of the guaranteed saving on the energy and operational side. Then there's things like capital projects, if you guys wanted to get turf fields done that you guys just have as a priority, that the district wants to get done. So, we've done a lot of the low-hanging fruit of your LED lighting, and I think we've done some of your mechanical work.
Yes, yes. A big thing was the transformers.
That's what, yeah.
Yep, transformers at the high school, as well as the next-door prospect and at Locust Grove Elementary. These just big, huge transformers somewhere up on the ceiling, right in the front mezzanine as you come in, in the vestibule there. Marty helped orchestrate the closure of those, of those projects with ABM as Doug departed us.
Well, I appreciate the hard work and the cost avoidance, and definitely maintaining a more green environment, so thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions for these fine gentlemen? Brian traveled all the way from Atlanta to be with us.
Thank you.
And the other Brian from Alexandria, so...
Welcome to Orange.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I'm gonna leave a hard copy up here for this over here with you guys.
Brian, thank you. Brian, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate the partnership, and you guys have been very good to us, and we appreciate you all, and it's been, it's been very beneficial. you all, and it's been very beneficial. We've been able to upgrade, improve, and be more efficient, and that's, those are three wins right there. So thank you, guys, for taking care of Orange County and our facilities.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then next, Madam Chair, is the one remaining action item from the June 2 meeting, which was the school board meeting calendar, and then we'll come forward with a few recommendations.
Was there any questions or anything on the calendar? Is this, is this looking okay for everybody? Obviously, as of right now, I mean, things may change, but I think overall. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the calendar for the board meeting 2025-26 draft.
May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Next, happy to bring forward Dr. Wolfrey, Ms. Ailer, to come back to do our yearly presentation of federal title grants. I assume, Judy, you're starting first with Title 1?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we just want to provide some information about our annual federal grant applications and seek board approval to submit our applications. So we have four federal grants that fall under Title 1. We've detailed information regarding what each of those accomplished in terms of serving our students, and the projected allocations that you see are based on the initial allocations from last year. Those could very well vary when we're actually granted the awards. So we'll talk about Title 1, Title 2, 3, and 4. Title 1, federal grant funds go to our schools with the highest percentages of students from low-income families. We target reading, math, and science instruction to serve those students. The majority of those funds are allocated to provide reading specialist salaries in those schools for additional interventions for students. Title 2 funds can target the entire division, and those are focused on professional learning for school leaders as well as academic staff. And Title 3 funds are used to support our English learners. We use those funds to partially provide tutoring and also for materials for those students. And then Ms. Ailer will share a little information about Title 4.
And Title 4, Part A, our allocation from last year was around $72,000, and this supports programs to provide access and opportunities for a well-rounded education for all students to create a healthy and safe school environment. It also helps to create personalized learning experiences by supporting technology and professional development for the effective use of technology and data. And our funds each year are used to support our STEM curriculum, professional development for the STEM curriculum, a student support coach, and our outpatient counseling services. Any questions?
Thank you both.
I have a question. I have a question. I asked Dr. Hornick earlier, and he said Judy might be able to tell me. I'm not sure if you are. Why are we not eligible for Title 5 funding?
That's a really good question. I'm not certain about Title 5. We don't have, I don't have experience with Title 5. We could certainly look into it.
Yeah, I mean, it's rural education achievement program, so I just, it just seems like it would be a fit, but I didn't see it listed, and I wanted to make sure that we were either not eligible or looking into it.
I could certainly look into it and let you know, but as far as I know, we have not received Title 5 funding, at least not during my tenure here.
In my entire career, I've not worked with Title 5.
It's kind of one of those ones that flies under the radar, so.
Okay. We can certainly look into it. Yeah, we're happy to do that.
All right, thank you.
Any questions? Any other questions?
Do we want to move?
It would be amazing if you could, because we do have to submit these on July 1st.
Dr. Wolfrey, it would be amazing.
It would be amazing.
Let me get to the right one. Hold on, so I can say it correctly.
It will allow us to submit these by the deadline.
Make a motion to approve submission of the 2025 federal grant applications, including the four listed here tonight.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. That was well done. Next, I want to bring forward Mr. Rutter to talk about the next installment of the Boys and Girls Club of America lease for the Teak Building.
Thank you, Dr. Hornick. Madam Chair, members of the board, tonight, before you, I come to talk about this draft lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club, using the back section here at Taylor Education. The director that's over this Boys and Girls Club has reached out to us in asking for an extension and a lease term, or a longer lease term than previously, the annual, and that's the way this is written. And the reason that the Boys and Girls Club is asking for this extended lease agreement is because they are willing to put in some of their money into adding a security vestibule to their entrance, as well as putting in some funds to improve the gym floor in the heads, I mean, the back gym there. I see Mr. Miller's with us this evening. Mr. Miller and I have a great working relationship. He's always a spot on it when I need something or have a question. But I encourage you to please take a look at this. Ms. Kate Lambert is who Dr. Hornick and I have been working with.
You fully support?
Most definitely.
Dr. Hornick?
Yes, sir.
I know it says for the next one, any indigestion with moving forward on this tonight? Like to make a motion to renew a long-term lease agreement with the Boys and Girls Club as presented.
May I have a second? All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'd like to say to Mr. Miller, thank you for the continued partnership. Love having you guys here. You guys do just amazing things for our community. Very much appreciate you and your board. Thank you, Marshall.
Thank you, Marshall. Thank you, James. Good to see you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Next this evening?
Mr. Miller.
Mr. Miller, that's correct. I'd like to bring forward Mr. Sarver to talk about a recommendation that he has, and I think this would be another one that if the board would help Mr. Sarver out and take actions, and I know he would appreciate that, but he would like to catch the board up on his recommendation for financing our school buses. Justin?
That's correct. Just to bring everybody back up to speed, the, many years ago, we made a transition from purchasing school buses from our operating fund to the county's capital improvement fund. So they, as a matter of just trying to stretch our tax dollars, they expressed a preference that we consider lease purchasing. It's allowed us to stabilize our replacement cycle. We typically replace seven buses per year. Our bus fleet's in wonderful shape. It helps keep the maintenance costs manageable. Our uptime has significantly improved. We now have a fleet of buses that are, with the exception of two, they're all uniformed, so there's, it takes all the training issues out of it. So this process has worked very smoothly, and I'm very appreciative of both boards as we've moved through this process. This year, we will be purchasing eight buses instead of seven, and that has, that is largely to do with our special needs population. Two are standard special needs buses that support regular transportation to and from school. The third bus is a much larger bus that will be outfitted with, I believe, five wheelchair fitments. The vehicle will allow us to transport any number of different purposes, but one very visible application will be for our Hornet Heroes, being able to take them as a team with fewer buses. I think that, you know, if you have an emergency at a school building, you can get more students in wheelchairs out at one time. There's just a lot of, our structure really, we've had a bus this size before, and it worked well for us. It aged out, so we saw the need. As you can see, it's a fairly large number. School buses are, like most everything else, have become quite, quite a bit more expensive than they used to be. The total purchase for eight buses is $1.33 million. That breaks down to being an annual lease payment of $467,904.71. We have solicited bids for purchase, or for financing options. We received a bid with a 4.37 interest rate from Cruz and Associates, and I believe there are firms that's also financed several projects for the Board of Supervisors. So I feel pretty comfortable bringing this recommendation forward. Approval will allow us to begin the underwriting process. Be happy to field any questions.
Two questions from me. So Cruz, and so the manufacturer doesn't do financing?
The manufacturer was provided with the bid as well. It's Daimler Financial, and they opted not to provide a bid. I don't know the ins and outs. I just, we made it available to them, and they did not submit a proposal.
So the county has used Cruz and Associates, and you're comfortable with that?
That's correct.
All right. Second question, are you still looking into batteries for our shorter distances?
We, any different type of technology, I'm always open to. We occasionally become, we'll receive opportunities for grant funding. We have applied in the past. We were not selected. Part of the issue is that we have a fairly new fleet relative to some of our neighboring school divisions. If you look at how the grants have been awarded in the past, you'll see that some of the smaller divisions have been awarded significant amounts of money from these, you know, for alternative fuels, and it's because they have buses that are, you know, 18, 20, 25 years old. So unfortunately, we
You're penalized, we're getting penalized because you're doing a great job.
By maintaining a fairly modern fleet, you know, by having a modern fleet, we're also not dealing with vehicles that emit, you know, obnoxious amounts of fumes. You could stand behind any of our buses, and you're not going to really smell what you would typically associate a diesel odor. So they're very clean, but as far, we constantly vet the different technologies. Diesel engines are not what they used to be. They're very expensive. They're very complicated. They don't have the longevity that they used to have. So the other school divisions have looked into gasoline and propane, and of course, there's electric vehicles available, too. Infrastructure has a lot to do with it. I've been a little nervous about propane because of infrastructure. It's just something different. It's not impossible to implement. Gasoline, you know, you lose a lot of energy efficiency with that. They're still going to get three to four miles per gallon, and the diesel's doing between nine and 11. You know, and there's always been kind of the crutch of having some tax credits with the alternative fuels, and there's some uncertainty with that as well. So we have, we've had very good luck with diesel with our, the environment we're in, but, you know, again, if you give me an electric bus, I'm going to figure out how to use it. We're going to always look for ways to save the taxpayers' money here, so.
We'll keep after it. You know, our shorter distances, especially with the three schools here in the town, you know, if you come across a grant or an opportunity like that, I'm sure you will.
Oh, absolutely.
But, you know, jump at it. I think it'd be a great learning for us as a rural community as well.
And we've, we've had some alternative fuel vehicles in the county as well. We've had, you know, if we go back a good number of years to 2009, 10, and 11, with the era funding, we purchased several hybrids during that time for our white fleet, the cars and trucks. And we've had good luck with those as well, and that's certainly a technology that we're certainly open to as well.
Justin and I have had quite a few conversations about EVs, and we know that for our geography, an EV bus is going to be, it's going to be a niche vehicle. What immediately came to mind to us was to harness the, the investment we've made into solar at Locust Grove Middle. And, you know, that'd be a spot where, you know, you could run it through Lake of the Woods, you can run it through, you know, Somerset behind the Walmart Wilderness, drop kids off and park it and charge it during day. We know it would have to be around town, like you're saying. Again, that would be getting the infrastructure in order to charge it. It would be kind of a niche vehicle for us.
There's some, there's some other complicators with it as well. Without a grant, you're looking at about $400, $450,000 for a single vehicle. So there's, there's some big cost implications until the technology becomes a little bit more readily available. Again, the charging infrastructure, you know, access to a dealer. We're far enough away from a dealer with an EV, you actually have to trailer. You can't just have it, you can't connect it to a standard tow truck. You have to flat tow it on a trailer, and that's a, that's a pretty big investment if it breaks down. So again, not resistant to any of the technologies, but certainly, we're going to take every opportunity to get whatever funding we can to better our fleet, so.
Thank you, as always.
No problem.
Speaking of funding, just wanted to make sure the funding that's being spent on this, I know that you said there was change from operating funds to CIP funds at a point in time, and I know that this year was a big funding concern for us relative to state, federal funding and having to not provide the level of salary increases that we had hoped for. Was this one of those things that we were looking at as a flexibility item, the funding that is going to be used? This, for some reason, I'm thinking in the back of my head, we were looking at delaying a lease purchase for a year or so.
It was something we had discussed. Fortunately, we did not have to do that. Justin was willing to assist if needed, but fortunately, we did not have to go down that road.
We had discussed reducing the total number of vehicles.
Right.
You know, when you start looking at a lease payment, that total lease payment of 467, you take a vehicle off of that, you're not, you're not removing the total cost, you're removing a portion of
Sixty-some, it was sixty-some thousand.
So it was not going to generate quite the amount of benefit as, you know, we needed, unfortunately, to fill that hole.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time getting the replacement cycle program up and rolling, and so that has allowed us to really save. Where that saves is on the ongoing maintenance.
We're currently operating one technician fewer than we had previously for many, many, many years. And from a stamp, where it becomes more challenging is just the sheer amount of time we have to cover. But from an actual work standpoint, you know, workload versus the number, you know, number technicians per vehicle, you know, having the fleet in a, in a good place has made that possible.
I'm very impressed. I'm very impressed with your management of that department and being, I mean, all of you guys are really great with making sure that you are utilizing and being as efficient and as effective as possible with the limited resources that you have at times. So thank you, and I just wanted to ask that question, so thanks.
Any other questions?
You're good. You're good. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
Do we want to move forward? Anybody have any heartburn about it? Justin, you might want to ask Dr. Wolfrey to help you.
Help you ask.
Ask. That would be amazing.
It would be amazing.
All right. Yeah, it was only funny the first time. Like to make a motion, recommend the purchase of the eight Thomasbilt school buses for a three-year municipality lease purchase financing.
May I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to bring Mr. Sarver back up.
You'll have to let me have a little bit of a break. It started a little early this morning. We did issue another request for proposal for fuel, for gasoline and diesel, and we received three responses. A couple of the responses were from brokers, and we did have a local response. After reviewing their pricing and comparing it to what we're currently using through the state motor fuel program, it's my recommendation that we stay with the state motor fuel program. The brokers were within a couple of cents per gallon, and unfortunately, the local was along the lines of between eight and 10 cents, depending on the product. So, and it's funny because the local vendor services our tanks through the state motor fuel program, but the sheer volume that that program Fuel Program, but the sheer volume that that program brings allows us to get a much more competitive price, so.
And we are currently using that program, and your recommendation is to?
To continue that.
Continue.
We're under no obligation. We could, we, we are not under any kind of a contract. It's, it's something that's available through the Department of General Services. We signed an initial agreement, but we have no obligation to continue that contract if at any point we decide we want to do something else.
And it would be?
Amazing.
It would be, it's overused. You are certainly welcome to take action on that tonight, but we're.
May I ask a question?
You sure may.
On the fuel purchasing contract, does that have any type of accelerant, or is there a percentage that it will not increase above based on economic conditions?
So it, it's based on a, the, there's a, there's a basic rack rate that fuel trades at, and then there's a pre-negotiated margin for profit and delivery and other fees. And it depends on the mode of transport. Our larger site, the transportation, they're able to deliver that with a tractor-trailer, and, and it's a less expensive per gallon. Our small sites have to be pumped because they're above ground. There's a higher cost per gallon for that.
But during the term of the contract, let's say gas goes up quite a bit.
It fluctuates. It's not a fixed price.
Does it have any type of cap on the amount that it will fluctuate?
No. It's very much like the, like, we have to endure at the pumps, it just doesn't have tax on it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How amazing is this?
Sure, anybody?
Sure, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 fuel purchasing contract as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Madam Chair, I turn back over to you.
All right. Policy services discussion. Ms. Dawson, would you like to start?
Yes, this is a continuation of what we discussed at the last meeting, and just to clarify, the request is simply to hear from School Board Member Alliance, SBMA, about what they have to offer as policy services. It's not a motion to approve using them. It's simply a motion to listen to what they have to share with us, because there are concerns about having policy services for the most recent legislative bills. I do want to clarify publicly, and I've, I've shared this with the board already. I became aware of a report by the Piedmont, they changed their name, and I always forget what it is now, Piedmont Journal Recorder, which was formerly MadRap. Chuck Jackson is frequently here in our meetings, and they did publish an article about, with a headline that said, I have the exact quote written here, "Orange School Board Considers Joining SBMA." That was published on June the 4th, and I ask Mr. Jackson to please print a correction to that. That is not true. School boards do not join SBMA. It's very different from VSBA, which is an all-or-nothing membership. SBMA allows for individual memberships for those members who choose to join, but at no point are we discussing joining SBMA. The, the topic under discussion last time and tonight is, could we hear from them about what their policies look like? What's their contract? What do they offer? What exactly would we gain, and would we be interested? So I would like to move that we approve hearing from SBMA about their policy services.
Is that an official motion?
That's a motion.
I will second that motion. All those in favor by moving forward with SBMA's discussion?
Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I would just add that I am absolutely in agreement that we should give the SBMA the opportunity to present the information to us. I, I still continue to advocate and support VSBA. I feel that we need a more comprehensive than just the policy system, but I'm, I am more than willing to listen to what they have to say, review their services, and, and make an informed decision.
Yeah, good.
All those in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to any future agenda items, I know we have our retreat coming up in July, and I would like to, again, not for this meeting, but to consider for the next meeting, to start coming up with some interviews, placement holders for the school board attorney. Yeah, so that would be just something that I would like to start coming up with some dates. Either it'd be on the retreat, if possible, if I can get them available that day. If not, come up with some other dates that would be good that we could start interviewing.
Madam Chair, I would state that I have been looking into that still. I've been trying to identify if we have any attorneys or firms out there that are members of the Council on School, I think it's called COSA, I don't remember the exact term from it, but I don't know, Dr. Hornick, have you been able to identify anyone else outside of VSBA, or if VSBA is willing to just provide policy services?
We have not at the moment, no, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe, I, I can send you the list, but I believe I have four, three that I've, three that I've talked to, and then one that I left a message for on Friday, and I haven't heard back yet, so.
I have identified one, and I do remember that you had provided us the list, but if you wouldn't mind sending it again, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Yep, I can do that. Is there anything else for future agenda items?
Just, just also wanted to ask Superintendent, I know at the last meeting, I think it was the last meeting, that I had asked for some feedback on the HB 1477 new law that was going to be put into place regarding the Innovation Action Kits and the different learning models flexibility. Have we received any direction on that yet?
No, ma'am, I have not.
And I'm also hoping to, I'm not sure, I don't want to put too much pressure, because I know you're trying to finish end-of-the-year stuff, but I am also very interested in hearing further about the chronic absenteeism at the high school and what we're doing to correct that.
We're going, on the, what was it, Susan? August the 11th, we were looking to, we were going to be providing an update on where we stood, student behaviors, et cetera, and attendance could be right, right in there with it, because we have to submit our, our SBAR report, Student Behavior and Administrative Responses, by July the 30th, July the 25th, somewhere around in there. So we were targeting August the 11th for that update.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it. Thank you. Ms. Dawson, you have anything?
I had that SBAR question on my list, so thank you for answering that before I could ask. The other thing I was interested in, and this, I, I, last weekend went back and read the strategic plan again, and that was one of the things that, that came to mind, was the SBAR reports, because our strategic plan, I think, says quarterly updates or something to that effect. So I'm interested to see where that goes. The other thing is the SOQ compliance data collection that's coming up. When I was reading, and this isn't in the strategic plan, but this came from the, from Virginia, the update that they send out, that we have to do no later than August 22nd, the compliance verification report, and that's signed by Dr. Hornick and Mrs. Anderson. And I was curious, I can't remember before that we saw that, before you signed it. I, I would like to see it, if it's going to be signed by Mrs. Anderson on our behalf, I'd like to, I'd like to have a chance to at least see what it looks like.
Remember what that looks like, Judy?
Yes, it's a series of questions that fall under different domains, includes staffing and programs, and we usually distribute that among different departments to respond, verify it, and then it goes to you, and then to the Chair of the Board.
I thought we did send it to the board last year.
I don't remember receiving it last year.
Well, I didn't remember that tonight started at 5:00, so it's very possible that I forgot last year. But in any case, I would like to see it, I think all of us should see it if it's going to be signed by Mrs. Anderson on our behalf.
Agreed.
So, just a request. And then I was also, in reading the Virginia update, there's just so many cool things coming. Dr. Wolfrey, you're probably miles ahead of me on this, but a Reading Revolution Week that's coming up in October, and then I saw, I've mentioned this before, because we live in Orange County, and James Madison's home is right down the road, I would love to see us do something. So I saw that Montpelier posted for Flag Day on Saturday, June the 14th, pictures, two pictures from 2001 and 2008 of a living flag that students created on the lawn of Montpelier, and they said, should we do it again? Well, duh, yeah, can we do it again, please? And we're approaching the 250th, you know, anniversary of the country. I, I'm just so excited about what potential things we could, we could do, and maybe you've already reached out to them. I know Mrs. Patera has also maybe reached out, but that'd be so awesome. I know I had a community member tell me that her son was involved, I think '01, maybe, and what a memory that is, and that picture is framed on the wall, and, and it's, it's just super cool. So I, I'd just love to see some 250th fun things at Montpelier happening. Constitution Day too, but if we could get one or the other at least, it'd be good.
We have big.
I figured you'd be miles ahead. Thank you. It's amazing.
I think you just got a new volunteer for anything. Ms. Dawson is more than happy to help with anything that you have planned.
Ms. Dawson almost has as much energy as Mr. Hornick.
Or PJ.
Mr. PJ.
Yeah, that's my guy.
Right, yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have.
But yes, we will, we will make sure that we send that in a usable format. It's a ton of yes, no questions. You know, do you, do you have enough, you know, support staff here? Do you have reading specialists here? Do you have, so that's not a problem for the SOQ compliance.
Thank you.
All right. Is that everything?
Ma'am.
All right. 7:00, right on the dot. Where's your?
Thank you.
Good job.